Very good. If we could, everybody mute except for Robert if Robert will lead us to flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Robert. There's a couple, this is a special meeting and so some of the things are obviously not there, but I'm going to add them anyway, real briefly. Tessa, do you have anything?
Actually, no, sir. I wasn't prepared to speak. However, I do know that we are attempting to meet with Mr. Westerberg to negotiate an addendum to the MOU. And so I just wanted to let you know that we are working on that, getting people together as quickly as possible. I think that's all I need to say at this moment. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Tessa. How about you, Dan?
I have nothing new. I just have some comments about the preschool job, which I guess I'll do when the preschool comes up. Thank you.
Okay. Now, this is a special meeting. We'll be meeting again on the 12th, I believe. So everybody will have another opportunity. Mark, did you have anything you want to throw in there?
No.
Any other?
No. Other than the fact that I'm less than pleased with my getting with WTA to resolve our class size issue, I'm getting pounded by independent study parents who want their kids to have the same opportunity. And I think we're not going in the right direction. So, but we're not going to resolve that here.
Hopefully, we can get that dealt with quickly and move forward. Any member?
I just want to say, I just want to extend my gratitude to all the teachers. I believe this is Teacher Appreciation Week, and our teachers do a great job for us. They work hard. They're amazing people and we love them all. So, thank you. Thank you so much for your hard work.
I have a question, Mark. Did you say that it will be three weeks before the meeting where WTA and the district decide on a couple of additional students per class?
It has been three weeks.
Oh, it has been three already.
We talked about this at our last board meeting.
Exactly. I remember that. And what I'm curious about is when will it be that you meet again and solve it?
Well, soon. The good news is, the good news is, this isn't a problem in the high school. And it's really not a problem at Brookside because they've accommodated it or Sherwood. The major issue is at Blosser.
Okay.
So, this is the negotiation second session, so we can move on. It's just that, let's just say, I'm not happy with the progress and I'll deal with it.
But there is a meeting date, right?
No.
Okay, that's what concerns me. Okay.
Go ahead.
Sorry. We are scheduled for May 11th at 3:15 in the afternoon. We do have an appointment.
Oh, okay. Well, that's better.
That's middle of next week. Okay. I do have a quick comment. Many of you guys know that Jeannie and I proposed a while back, two board meetings ago, that we actually focused resources at K3 or K5 reading literacy program that will all but ensure that all of our kids are reading at grade level as they exit K3 or K5. There's been a number of meetings. More and more people are getting behind this project. I want to say I appreciate everything that everybody's doing, the ideas that are coming forward. Kathleen and Nancy are kind of taking the lead on this, and we very much appreciate that, especially Kathleen. The, it looks like a lot of ideas are coming forward. Some of them are filtering to the top. And basically, what we've put in their laps is tell us what you need so that the board and the superintendent can work towards providing those resources. And they're getting closer and closer to recommendations for the ideas that have been floated forward. And hopefully, we can end up with something that we can have in place by the fall so that we can hopefully make a big dent in literacy achievement for our K3 and K5 students. So, anyway, once again, thank you very, very much for all the participation. And anybody else that has ideas that wants to be involved, please get involved. Talk to Kathleen, talk to Nancy, talk to your other teachers. But anybody that's interested, I'm happy to have your input. Thank you. Moving on. Item A, approval of job description salary schedule for the Special Education Program Specialist.
You want me to take this, Alex?
Go right ahead.
Yeah. So, we have looked at putting in a program specialist. And the program specialist role, our budget, our budget has three school psychs available. And we're not choosing to hire a third psych. We believe a program specialist will help our needs more. And Kelly needs someone to work directly with teachers and to help her run the program. There are 200-plus kids she's dealing with, some not even in our district. And so, this is part of disproportionality. It's also part of learning loss mitigation. Our COVID funds that we have, this is part of getting kids back on track and back in school. This is a much-needed part of our special ed program. And so, after we get done with this, our intent is to post the position internally and externally and seek applicants.
We've already gone through this. We already talked about these in closed session. Now, we need to actually approve them. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll serve move.
I second.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion?
I just wanted to say that in the notification for the superintendent's office, it says that this position will reduce or eliminate outgoing costs for services received from Presence Learning and Mendocino County Office of Education. So, it's not just totally added expenses. It's, there's some reduction from where we're spending money elsewhere for the same.
Right. And Jeannie, if you need clarification on that, this is Kelly, and I'm sorry, I'm at a swim meet. So, if you can't hear me, but right now, we have two and a half days of school psychologist time that we pay for through the county office. And we also, our psychologists are not able to keep up with assessments. So, we use an online company named Presence Learning so that we can meet all of our mandates. And so, we would no longer need to do that if the program specialist we hire has a school psych credential. That would reduce that outgoing that we've always had. But the other two, the other, you know, portion of that is to have us be able to focus on interventions for kids before they get to special ed. And a program specialist can support general ed teachers who have kids with behavioral issues in their class and also work on behavioral interventions, which is something, you know, our psychologists and myself, I like to do, but we just haven't, we don't have the manpower at the moment.
So, Kelly, can we include that, that one qualification in the jobs, in the job requirement for this particular individual?
We left it open-ended. If the, if we could modify that to make it a requirement to be a school psychologist. But as Mark said, the, the disproportionality and the, we have to spend 15% of our budget for the next year on the intervention. So, next year, it could be either one.
It would be considered to give preference to if they have it.
Makes sense. Okay.
Yeah.
So, it's a motion and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'm curious about the salary schedule. That's modifiable every time there are negotiations, right? Or if the superintendent chooses to bring it forward and modify it?
Yes.
Okay.
We tried to be proportional in it, to be honest with you, Paula. It generated a lot of discussion with administrators on how disproportionate our current schedule is.
Yes. There are a number of things that we've talked about that I, I'm really opposed to. Exactly.
And I have a solution that I'll be giving to them that you'll be able to deal with in July or August if you choose.
Okay. I would just hate for someone to think that it's kind of concreted right now when it really, really needs work and there would be some changes.
And I, I think you and I would, would say that it's convoluted.
There, that's it. We'd probably agree on all of that, which would be fun, for change.
But we, we agree that it's convoluted. And I have a proposal that Nikki's working on. And by the way, I gave Nikki the night off because there weren't really financial stuff on this. And I've got a lot of reports she's got to be pounding out for me. But this is, this is one of those issues, Paula, that, that you and I are really on the same page. That schedule's a mess. We tried to fit it into the mess to be less messy. But it's, it's still not where it needs to be. And that needs to be the end. We can't just fix this one.
Okay. Well, I really appreciate that, Mark. I do a lot.
Okay. So, any further discussion on item A? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye. Okay, passes. Item B, approval of job description and salary schedule for Classified Management Preschool Director. Again, we discussed this one in closed session. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve to have this position changed to the
And a second?
Classified Management.
I second it.
Motion and second. Discussion?
I want to first say, I want to thank Dan for working with us in CSEA. I know it's not often we come to him and say, can we move somebody out of your bargaining unit? That wasn't the intent of the position. The intent of the position is to pay it properly where it needs to be and give them duties that are, that also align with that. And this is one of those positions, Willets is very fortunate to still have preschool and to have our own. If you go around town, you can see lots of shut-down preschools because of funding and facilities and payments and things. So, our program, our person who runs preschool does a really good job. All of the funds that run the program, except in-kind, which would consider facility, heat, gas, all that stuff. The grant we get from MCOE pays that and will pay for this slight increase to her to make it more accountable. So, it's not a financial hit to the district. It is an adjustment that CSEA worked out with us. And it allows us to have, continue to have a strong program.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments on this. The preschool at Brookside is, it's a great example of personnel in the district working together over the years and growing it and making it really successful. And this, this vote is part of acknowledging the success and the deeds that the personnel have done in this room. And my congratulations goes to them all for making it a better environment for the kids.
Thanks, Dan. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, everybody. Item number C, discussion of vacant property. This will be the property adjacent to Blosser Lane Elementary.
I want to, I want to give my strongest recommendation, but realize that it's ultimately your decision. There are multiple groups in town. City Council, housing group projects. The county has a program running. I got a call from John Hascheck today, who is meeting with Mendocino housing people. They're bringing in a college to do a study on housing and the shortage and ways to solve it. I highly recommend that you look at that property as an opportunity to fix housing in the district. Bring kids to the district, help the economy. There is no possible way in the next 30 years, the district's going to be building a new school there. Not even possible. The funding to do a new school, we can't even levy that amount of tax if we wanted to. I think we, our facilities are important. This would be money that you could add because if you look in the board in my office, there's a whole lot bigger list of stuff that still needs to get done than the bond will ever handle. And I think you really need to consider that. Bear in mind that you can choose to put it out for sale. And if you don't get what you want for it, or you change your mind, you're never obligated to sell it until you sign it closing. But there are a lot of factions in the community hoping that we can enhance the housing. And to be honest with you, we have the best piece of property in town, right between two schools and a rock's throw from Safeway. And so, I would highly recommend you strongly consider putting it leased on the market to see if it's even available. Remember that housing is, the interest rates are low and the market is good. This is a premium time to sell property, one of the better times in quite some time. So, I just want to open it up for discussions and let you know what I'm hearing from community people and community groups.
Any further discussion at the board?
I think Conan has his hand up.
Conan, go ahead.
I love the idea that Mark's talking about housing. If you're opening up to housing or if that's part of the discussion, I know that a lot of new teachers are, have difficulty finding housing and affordable housing in Willets. If that becomes the route, I would like the board to consider possibly having some units available or reserved for teachers who come to the district.
Be clear that I'm not asking for the school to develop the property. We would sell it to a developer. And remember that you can sell it in parts or whole.
Absolutely. It's, as I said, it's, I would like that to be part of the ongoing discussion. That is all just something for the board to consider and think about.
Thank you. My position at this stage is, I'm not in favor of selling the property at this point. I would far rather see it. Part of it is because, I agree, Mark, on the surface, it does not look like we will have funds for a new school anytime soon. But if we're talking about our current, our current federal administration is rattling, making noises like they're going to try and provide significant amounts of money for certain kinds of infrastructure, including schools, until that, until that kind of gets fleshed out. I certainly want to take a more conservative approach and wait and see. It would be an awesome site for, for building a new school to replace something like Bechtel Grove, for example. On the other hand, it also is, for want of a better way to put it, it's, it's an ace in the hole for the, for the next, next time we find ourselves in financial difficulties. And hopefully, that doesn't happen for many, many more years. But in other words, we're not compelled to sell it. I'm, I'm not ready to pull that trigger.
So, I would just want to bring this up as, throw this out there as a possibility. I've heard that some school districts have leased, done long-term leasing on property that they're not using. And it gives the school district guaranteed extra income for an extended period of time rather than actually selling the property. I'm not saying, I'm advocating for that. I'm just saying that that's something that I've heard that other school districts have done.
No, it's true.
It'd be interesting to see what that property could be leased for, what kinds of uses it could, because remember, it's been rezoned. So, and being rezoned residential, I'm sure that limits the opportunities that that property could be utilized for.
What I would suggest is if you ever look down that road, you consider things like a tiny house community because a tiny house can be moved. Because if you lease it, nobody's going to build a house on there and call it their own if it's leased.
Right.
So, a tiny house, and that's a very popular thing right now. Tiny houses also make great starter homes for young teachers. And you could lease the property out. The biggest issue you face in doing that is the infrastructure to do that. The water, the plumbing, the sewer, and the road. That's the biggest hurdle to that is that you would have to develop some of that. And either you use your own district money to do it or you try to incorporate that into a lease, but it's going to be tough to do that. You'd have to take a loan out to do that. Unless in your next bond, you, one of the things you do is you use some of bond funds to enhance the property as a long-term investment for something like that. But the reality is, the infrastructure is the problem if you're going to lease it out. Because just like the railroad lets us use the property behind the football field, the only caveat is, we can't build anything on it. We can do whatever we want on the property. He told us, we can have a circus, we can practice, do whatever we want to do on it. Just don't build anything.
Makes sense. So, it isn't, it is in the action items section of the minutes, or I should say, section of the agenda. If a board member wants to make a proposal to sell that property or lease that property or examine other opportunities for that property, now's your opportunity to make a motion. Failing that, we'll move on to the next item. Okay, not hearing anything. We'll move on to item D, discussion of WSD COVID testing.
I thought it was going to be Nunez Gardens.
No, the last thing I want is that property sold right now. So, that's, sorry. Unless you want to give it to me as a parting gift or anything. No?
By the way, I just want to add one more thing on the property. If you're ever in a position where you are going to do that, you have a neighbor who is landlocked by us with another acre and a half. The only way to access that property is through his driveway. But he is looking to sell that partition off. And so, you could enhance your acreage by another acre and a half if you included him. So, there's more property even than what we have available.
Got it.
Okay. So, on to the next one, COVID testing. So, one of the things we made sure that we had in place was the ability to rapid test people for COVID. Marion has done a great job of training people at each site to make that happen. Marion, are you on tonight?
I don't see her.
That's okay. But she's done a great job of training people at each site. So, we initially started going to each of the four major sites. Brookside, Blosser, Bechtel, and the high school, after, like, from 3:00 to 4:00 o'clock, testing people. And the testing is 15 minutes. I've done it three times. It works really well. It's super easy. My wife got a test done at Bechtel Clinic. They used exactly the same thing we use. And they do exactly the same way. They come out, they hand you the swab. You go through your nose three times on each side. They hand you, you hand them back the swab. They put it in a little template, and in 15 minutes, they give you your results. It's really, really helpful. Now, if most people, when we first started, we had 25 to 30 people. We're down to about 10 to 12. Marion has continued to scale the program back down. Now, we're at two sites. Probably in another week, we'll be down to one site. You know, we've moved a lot of colors between now and when we started this. And so, you know, right now, there was, I believe, 12 or 13 tests last week. Okay? And with 85% now of the staff are vaccinated, you know, most of the folks who are vaccinated are not doing it. So, I just wanted to allude you guys to the fact that even though the numbers are low, the ability to do it is still really important. We had a minor outbreak at Blosser, and we were able to provide tests immediately for a parent. We didn't have a lot of parents who wanted to do it. It was a tertiary contact, not a direct. But we did have a couple of parents who go, well, I really want to know. And we were able to test them immediately. So, it's a great service. And by the way, it's all federally documented. So, the three tests that I have, I had to sign a form and I had to sign a waiver and say, yes, you can use my data. So, when you watch the news media and they say, what's the positivity rate and all that in testing? Our data gets put into that as well. And so, every time we have a student, if we have a student who's ill and goes home and is symptomatic, we always offer to test, but the parents have to give parental permission to do that. We don't just test the kids on our own. But it has been very helpful, giving peace of mind to folks. Because, you know, even though we're on the plus side now, there's still folks who are concerned and should be. And this has been a really good service. And you have two people at each site who are able to test on demand. If, in fact, I got mine done at like 1:00 on, I don't know, last week, Thursday or something. And so, I got it done. We have an onsite testing coming tomorrow. They're going to evaluate how our people are doing. And so, we just need to make sure we acknowledge those folks. I have had them document all of their time. And we'll be giving them some additional compensation for being the testers. We're going to use some of the COVID funds to do that. And they have been teachers and paras and all kinds of folks and admins who have been doing it. So, it's a really good thing.
So, Mark, does, did we get parental permission for most of our student body upfront? Or is that something you're doing on a case-by-case basis?
We only test students who are symptomatic, so we do a case-by-case. The only athletes where we had to get parental permission were the athletes at the high school. There's a requirement for the Athletic Association that they be tested. And so, we do test the athletes, but they got tested upfront. And so, they have testing available to them. They've already signed the paperwork and everything. But the athletes are really the only student group who is tested. I will tell you that we are going to have a, what I will call a very Willetsey prom. We are going to do it in the new farm barn that we have. So, the egg farm has that big barn that Jen Drew and all those people put together. We're going to open up all the doors. We got stall doors that we're going to open. We're going to open it all up and have hay bales. We're going to kind of have a Sadie Hawkins prom, if you will. And part of that is, we're going to test every student in the morning and before they come to prom at night. So, even though we're going to have a prom and a dance, we're going to go through a safety protocol of testing prior to.
I'm assuming that, that all of the adults involved I'm assuming that, that all of the adults involved, chaperones, they'll be tested as well?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. And the adults, especially if you're not vaccinated, you have to test. You have to test within a close proximity to being at the event. Actually, in today's rules, the vaccinated people don't have to be tested. But, you know, we recommend they always test, so. You know, even though I'm fully vaccinated, I've still tested three times just because it's simple, it's easy. And why would you not? So.
Good. Any, any questions from the board? Not hearing anything? Okay. Um, any public comments for items not on the agenda? Not everybody jump in at once. Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Um, I take a motion to adjourn.
One, one more before you go, Alex. Our next board meeting on the 12th, we will have, the board will be in person. The audience will all be Zoom. Okay?
Got it.
And we're also still going to have a closed session in person?
Yes.
So it'll start at 4:00 in that same boardroom?
Yes. And what I'm going to do is ask, I'm going to ask Arnie if he'll let us just stay and do our board meeting from there.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah. Alex wants everybody to go over to Roots and eat and then come back in for their second session.
They really do make good food. Yeah, that's true.
But we'll do our closed session, not we. I'm not going to be in your closed session. I told Alex, when you're done with your closed session, if you want to call me in, I'll be available. I'll be there for your open session, so we can do that. And we'll try and do it right from there. But the board will be in person, all the guests will be Zoom.
Okay, the, the candidates, um, there'll be somebody outside managing those folks as they come in?
Trina will be.
Very good.
And that's the one we start at 1:00, right? So we're just going to be there from like 1:00 until whenever the regular board meeting ends?
Correct, yes.
Oh, okay.
And Paula, depending on how many candidates they move forward, if it's only two, we might bump that time of the closed session back a little bit.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
We might bump it back a little bit because it's only going to affect you guys. It won't affect the audience.
Yeah.
But we'll have the board meeting at the same time.
Exactly. No, that's good. I appreciate the clarification.
I hope it's clear, mud, so we're ready to go.
Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
And the second? It's like Diane will be our second. Okay? All in favor to adjourn? Say aye. Aye?
Well done.
Thank you, everybody. See you guys on the 12th.